Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees at Joliet Junior College from Wednesday, March 12, 2025. At this point, I'd like to call to order. As we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that this evening will be conducted in accordance with Board Policy 014500, Meetings of the Board and Robert's Rules of Order. Our attorney, Matt Campbell, will serve as a parliamentarian to ensure the meeting proceeds professionally. You'll notice that a staff member is present to assist with time management. Per policy, each trustee will have three minutes to speak and two minutes for rebuttal, with continuous timing observed, and only one speaker holding the floor at a time. In alignment with Board Policy 010300, I encourage everyone to maintain civility and respect even when expressing different opinions. This commitment to civility is essential to fostering productive and respectful discussions. Item 1.1. Karen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Broderick.
Present.
Trustee Garcia again.
Present.
Trustee Harris.
Present.
Trustee Morales.
Present.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Present.
Trustee Queenie.
Present.
Trustee Bezinski.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
We have a cor- um, Trustee Lee is attending virtually.
Yes, she notified us that she would not be here for health reasons, so with the board, with no objections from the board, we're going to allow her to join remotely.
Then we have a cor.
Item 1.12, like to welcome everyone to this evening's board meeting. We're going to move on to 1.13, the Pledge of Allegiance led by Luke Galloway, one of our students here on campus.
(inaudible) United States of America and in due Republic over which stands one nation under God and with the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Luke. Item 1.2, Communications. I want to revisit an announcement I made back at the August 2024 board meeting in my chairman's report. At that time, I shared that the board and college would engage an outside independent law firm to investigate grievances from employees regarding incivility and a hostile environment created by one or more trustees. We have received the findings of this report, which I will outline shortly. Starting in September 2024, the investigating firm reviewed numerous documents, board meetings, and conducted interviews with a dozen people. In order to conduct a comprehensive assessment, the complete review took several months and culminated with the findings being shared with the board last month. The report found that grievances lodged by President Numuwa and the campus employee were in fact credible despite the fact that Trustees Broderick and Trustee Lee refused to cooperate with the investigation. Additionally, investigators concluded that Trustee Maureen Broderick and Michelle Lee violated on numerous occasions and in many ways multiple board policies and rules. Their actions interfered with the board's business and the work of JJC employees. Their unprofessional communications and action were demeaning, threatening, offensive, and created a hostile atmosphere for those to whom they're directed, or they were directed, as well as observers. Unfortunately, state laws does not provide a mechanism for possible impeachment and/or removal from elected office. In addition, multiple votes from this board to censure both Trustee Broderick and Trustee Lee have done little to mitigate their unprofessional and uncivil behavior. The firm has offered several recommendations which I, as chairman of the board, fully intend to pursue with the support of my fellow trustees. I want to thank the college community for its patience as we address these various serious claims and concerns of our employees. Accountability exists across college operations, and yes, it also extends to the Board of Trustees and our governing roles. While we have different responsibilities to this institution, we all contribute to the equity, fairness, and atmosphere of trust and respect that is JJC. We take these matters very seriously and will not tolerate unethical, uncivil, and generally unacceptable conduct by anyone, let alone from fellow trustees. Item 1.3, Proclamations, Community College Month. Dr. Carl Brooks.
Members of the Board of Trustees and those in attendance at today's meeting, both physically and virtually, it gives me great pleasure to introduce JJC student Abigail Camacho, I think she goes by Abby, who has graciously agreed to read the JJC proclamation, which recognizes the month of April 2025 as Community College Month. Before Abby reads the proclamation, I'd like to share a little bit about her. Abby is a freshman at Joliet Junior College. She is currently an undecided student. She's a member of the Executive Board of Latino Unidos. Abby is a secretary for Stitch and Chat Club, and she is a member of the Black Student Union, Sustainability Union, and Pride Alliance. Abby works to participate in programs and events that inspire her. She's currently participating in a job shedding opportunity with Beautifully Empowered and using resources like C-MAS and career services. I humbly present to all of you JJC student Abby Camacho.
Whereas more than 1,200 community, technical, and junior colleges, public and private in the United States have contributed enormously to the richness and availability of American higher education. And whereas the public and private community, junior and technical colleges provide a broad array of educational services, which include transfer education, two-year associate's degree programs, certificate programs for employment, basic skills education, continuing in community education. And whereas, community colleges work in partnership with business, industry, and government to provide job training assistance and economic development. Whereas, community college provides necessary resources for community service, including career development, job search assistance, counseling, and developmental education. And whereas, through these services, community colleges meet diverse in changing local needs and fulfill a vital function within the state's higher education system. And whereas, community college provides an opportunity to obtain post-secondary education at a reasonable cost within commuting distance of their students' homes. And whereas, Joliet Junior College is one of the 39 community college districts in Illinois providing occupational, pre-baccalaureate, and continuing education courses and services to more than 1 million Illinois citizens each year. Now therefore be it resolved that Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees hereby designates the month of April as Community College Month in Illinois' Community College District Number 525, and encourages all citizens to recognize and value the opportunities available to them at Joliet Junior College and at community, technical, and junior colleges throughout the United States. Adopted this 12th day of March 2025.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 1.3.2, Earth Month. Dr. Carl Brooks.
Members of the Board of Trustees and those in attendance at today's meeting, again, both physically and virtually, it gives me great pleasure to introduce JJC student Ash Klinder, who graciously agreed to read the JJC proclamation, which recognizes the month of April 2025 as Earth Month. Before Ash reads the proclamation, I'd like to share a little bit about her. She's a student at JJC who has earned her Associate of Science degree with a biology specialization, but is continuing to take classes to further her education at a more attainable price. Ash is the sustainability campus intern at JJC and has worked in the Office of Sustainability since August 2022, coordinating meetings, events, and volunteer opportunities for JJC students, faculty, staff, and the extended community. She is an environmentalist by passion, working to be the change, advocating for a circular economy, and achieving sustainable goals. She wants to see nonpartisan environmental policies be put into place to hold the largest polluters accountable, and encourages others to think about their impact on the environment in their daily lives at the college, utilizing Office of Sustainability initiatives such as the BYO pledge campaign and Romeo Ville Repair Cafe. I humbly present to the board JJC student Ash Klinder.
Whereas, Earth Month is celebrated at Joliet Junior College through the entire month of April, as is prudent, since the Earth provides us with all of our resources and is the only known planet that can sustain life. Whereas, beginning on April 22, 1970, Earth Day paves an avenue for sustainable growth and a connection to a global consciousness, fostering resilient communities and technological innovation. Now more than ever, these environmental, economic, and social equity issues should be integrated into different curriculums, career paths, businesses, government, and lifestyle choices through the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Whereas, Joliet Junior College recognizes the importance of maintaining the planet's ecological balance and responsible usage of resources through its board policy 9.12 Sustainability, adopted March 2012, and through the adoption of sustainability as one of our core values in the annual celebration of National Arbor Day on April 25, 2025. Whereas, the Joliet Junior College Office of Sustainability is committed in their mission to educate students, faculty, staff, and the administration on the importance of sustainability through our individual and community actions. During Earth Month, we acknowledge the personal responsibility we all share to think globally and act locally as environmental stewards of the planet Earth. This has never been more timely or important as it is now. Whereas, the Office of Sustainability is focusing on promoting cycles of reuse in a circular economy through initiatives like the Take It Table, Bring Your Own Campaign and Pledge, and the Romeo Ville Repair Cafe. Whereas, JJC's sustainability initiatives will extend beyond the college to Joliet's community and enable us to educate and inform the public to what we do and accomplish together through community collaborations like the upcoming Recycle Palooza with Will County Land Use, Slammers Water Day with the City of Joliet, Earth Awareness Day with Frankfurt Library, and Fall Fest with the Crest Hill Library. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees proclaim the month of April 2025 as Earth Month in Community College District Number 525, adopted on this 12th day of March 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
You mentioned the Romeo Ville Repair Cafe. I know you have a date coming up, you know, can you share that with us?
Yes, on April 12 at the Romeo Ville Campus, we will be having Romeo Ville Repair Cafe from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock in the main lobby.
And how many is this now that we've been doing this?
This is number four.
Awesome, thank you.
It gets bigger every time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.3.3, National Arab American Heritage Month. Dr. Carl Brooks.
Members of the Board of Trustees and those in attendance at today's meeting, again, physically and virtually, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the JJC student Seja Roman, who has graciously agreed to read the JJC proclamation, which recognizes the month of April 2025 as the National Arab American Heritage Month. Before Seja reads the proclamation, I'd like to share a little bit about her. Seja is 18 years old. She's a freshman at Joliet Junior College, currently enrolled in the phlebotomy program as a side job. She also works at Reed and Ascent Learning Center on Saturdays, where she loves helping kids grow and learn. Seja also volunteers at her local mosque, always aiming to put a smile on each little kid's face, hoping to be positive and a positive role model for all of them. Seja is pursuing her passion in healthcare. She plans to major in radiology tech and will be applying to the program in November with hopes of being accepted. Her goal is to build a career in the medical field, helping others through diagnostic imaging and patient care, and giving them a plan to stay healthy and take care of themselves. Something she is really looking forward to is being able to see her parents, or her patients rather, progress and become better through each treatment. I humbly present to you JJC student Seja Roman.
Whereas, whereas, Joliet Junior College would like to officially recognize April as the National Arab American Heritage Month, to acknowledge and celebrate the history of those who have made and continue to make valuable contributions in our society in ensuring progress and lasting equality for Arab American individuals. And whereas, it is appropriate and right to celebrate a diversity of cultures and heritage and heritages, as in such celebration serves as a reminder that despite our differing backgrounds, everyone in Illinois is bound by a common hope for a better and more inclusive future for our children. And whereas, the Arab American community has a long and integral history in the United States. And whereas, for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society, including medicine, law, business, technology, government, and culture. And whereas, tens of thousands of Arab Americans have served during World War I, World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Iraq War, and the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq after September 11, 2001. And whereas, the history of Arab Americans in American life often remains neglected and has been riddled with misunderstanding and bigotry. And whereas, men and women of Arab descent having shared their rich culture, strong work ethic, and dedication to education while embracing the American spirit of opportunity and helping us build a better nation and state for all. And whereas, it is estimated that there are approximately 450,000 people of Arab American descendants in Illinois with more than 100,000 Arab American voters registered. And whereas, we recognize and celebrate the contributions to cultural diversity, economic growth, and the overall development of our state and nation made by the Arab American community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois' Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and honor April as the National Arab American Heritage Month, adopted this 12th day of March 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, they just moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 1.3.4, the Harry Benton Appreciation, 12 by 12 by 12. Dr. Fainemo.
Chairman, thank you, and trustees, perfect timing, Representative Benton, perfect timing, my friend. So, you know, Representative Benton is in Springfield, of course, but I want to share a couple of things, Chairman, if it's okay. We've got some proclamations to share from some of the early investors and supporters of 12 by 12 by 12, and I'm going to enlist Ryan to help me read a couple of, one of the other proclamations, but I want to start with Representative Benton, who's taken time out of his day down in Springfield, to just acknowledge his contributions as an early investor and early supporter. I won't read all the whereas statements, and at some point, the trustees and I will travel down to Springfield and present this board proclamation to Representative Benton. He's just been an extraordinary supporter, a very strong supporter of dual credit. So here goes. Whereas, Illinois State Representative Harry Benton has demonstrated outstanding leadership, dedication, and advocacy in advancing educational opportunities for students across our community. And whereas, Representative Benton led the effort in the Illinois House of Representatives to formally recognize the transformative impact of JJC's 12 by 12 by 12 dual credit program through House Resolution 0647 passed by the 103rd General Assembly on May 2, 2024. Whereas, House Resolution 0647 acknowledges the successful implementation of 12 by 12 by 12, commends JJC for its commitment to inspiring learning, transforming lives, and strengthening communities, and encourages other community colleges to pursue similar programs to expand access to higher education. Now be it, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Joliet Junior College Counties Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby appreciate Representative Benton's enduring commitment to advancing higher education and expanding opportunities for all students in Illinois, adopted this 12th day of March 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
We've got Representative Benton on right now, Chairman. He might want to say a few words.
So as you know, this is a very important program that Dr. Numuwa brought to our attention when he first came here, and what it does is it gives us an opportunity to work with students long before they're ever thinking about coming to JJC. We have it in their mind that this is normal for them to grow up and continue their education, and we hope they choose an institution like ours. And so therefore, we thank Mr. Benton for his support in this. Harry, go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
First and foremost, I just want to say thank you, not only for the resolution and just for being a great community partner and leading the state in dual credit. I think it's easy to be a partner with somebody that's doing the work and going above and beyond, and offering so many opportunities for so many students across the state and across JJC. It is a program that I talk about down in Springfield and across the state, and want to start seeing the Illinois Community College Board and other community colleges implementing these programs statewide, because it's offering affordable, and in your case, if they end up going to Joliet Junior College, free college, this is, this is what we're all striving for, higher education. So thank you for the recognition, and I will continue to be an advocate and a strong champion for Joliet Junior College and the program that you're offering to students across your service area. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 1.3.5, Manuka School District Appreciation for 12 by 12 by 12.
Chairman, another proclamation in support of, really celebrating 12 by 12 by 12. We decided to find ways to celebrate the districts that have embraced 12 by 12 by 12. So you'll, the board will have two resolutions or two proclamations of appreciation coming. The first for Manuka School District, and you'll see why, and then Ryan will read the Lockport proclamation. So Ryan, I'll do the Manuka one first, and then you want to handle the Lockport?
Yeah.
And then you'll tell the college community why you're doing the Lockport one, I imagine.
Yeah, I'll share with them.
All right. So Chairman, bear with me. Whereas, Manuka Community High School District 111 has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to academic excellence and expanding higher education opportunities for its students. And whereas, the district has embraced JJC's 12 by 12 by 12 dual credit initiative, a transformative program designed to allow over 40,000 eligible high school students in JJC's district to earn 12 college credits by the 12th grade for just $12 per credit hour. And whereas, in the fall of 2023 semester, Manuka Community High School District 111 had the highest student participation of all participating schools, with an extraordinary 524 students engaging in 12 by 12 by 12, earning a total of 2,265 college credit hours. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Joliet Junior College Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize Manuka Community High School District Number 111 for supporting access to higher education and expanding opportunities for all students in its district, adopted this 12th day of March 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
All right. So then there's the next proclamation, which is for Lockport School District, and their 12 by 12 by 12 initiative, and them again being an early adopter of this program. So then whereas, Lockport Township High School District 205 has demonstrated unwavering commitment to academic excellence and expanding higher education opportunities for its students. And whereas, the district has embraced the Joliet Junior College 12 by 12 by 12 dual credit initiative, a transformative program designed to allow over 4,000 eligible high school students in the JJC district earn 12 credit hours by the 12th grade, just for just $12 per credit hour. And whereas, in the fall semester 2024, Lockport Township High School 205 had the highest student participation of all participating schools, with an extraordinary 579 students engaging in the 12 by 12 by 12 dual credit initiative, earning a total of 2,429 college credits. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Joliet Junior College Counties of Will, Grundy, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize Lockport Township High School District 205 for supporting access to higher education and expanding opportunities for all students across the district. And I'm just going to quickly share, the reason I wanted to read this proclamation tonight was because I am a graduate from Lockport Township High School, and actually I was involved in one of those programs that's now dual credit through Wilco, through Lockport High School, when I was a student back in 2018. So, thank you, I'm, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Chairman, may I wait and make one final statement in regards to these proclamations? First of all, thank the board for your support. Over the next couple of months, so sometime during the spring, I plan to travel to both Lockport and Manuka's district to present this to them, and Chairman, I'll work with you in terms of trustee representation to come with me. I do want to publicly thank the superintendents of both of those districts, both Dr. Rob Schiffbauer in Manuka and Dr. Bob McBride of Lockport. This is not by accident. These two districts have embraced the dual credit initiative, have promoted it, and we're seeing numbers to support that. So I just want to publicly thank them for their support.
Thank you.
Item 1.4, Recognition of Retirement. Dr. Ken Saniano.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chairman Bezinski, Mr. President, and the JJC community. A little bit about our four employees being recognized for their dedication to the success of JJC. Janet Graham, Janet began at JJC as a part-time fitness center tester in 1996. Shortly thereafter, became involved in performing power testing, showcasing her dedication and expertise. By 2004, Janet transitioned to a full-time role as a fitness specialist, where she focused primarily on power testing. Under her diligent supervision, the programs and revenue soared from $3,000 to an impressive $140,000. As Janet and her husband Richard look forward to retirement, they plan to split their time between their home in Plainfield and their new residence in Florida. Myra Mitchell, after 30 incredible years of her dedication, Myra is retiring from JJC. She started in April 1995, but she's been steadily present through countless changes and updates. An invaluable asset, Myra has been more than just a secretary, she's been a mother, a colleague, a friend to all faculty. Her kindness, wisdom, and unwavering support will be deeply missed. While we are sad to see her go, we celebrate this new chapter in her life, wishing Myra a wonderful and well-deserved retirement. Loretta Verden, Loretta has faithfully served as an English as a second language instructor for the Department of Adult Education and Literacy for the past 22 years. She is one of the most senior instructors within the department, as well as being kind and extremely effective. Loretta came to adult education after serving in the military as an adult trainer, and her students will attest that she's maintained her drive in civilian life, as she's held them to the highest level of rigor in her class. Loretta's never balked at a challenge and taught in the old city center campus housing a former hotel through COVID and into a new era of digital skill learning. For adult staff, Loretta's faculty, fellows, and especially her students, her retirement will garner mixed emotions, as we wish her well on her future pursuit, and also will dearly miss her in her presence in the classroom. And there's Debbie Albert. Everyone else is Debbie. And I don't want to get off script here, I'll just stick to my comments. Debbie is one of the heart and soul, really, of the JJC community, always going above and beyond everyone with everyone around her. Over the years, she has demonstrated her belief in the power of teamwork. She has led with collaboration and respect, making everyone feel heard, valued, and appreciated. Her leadership, dedication, and care has left a mark on students, staff, and faculty alike. Debbie has been an exceptional trainer, always offering an abundance of knowledge and generosity, stepping in to assist anyone, anytime, anyplace, no matter what the situation is. And she does so with grace, patience, and willingness to help. In every role she has held at JJC, Debbie has consistently prioritized the interest in has consistently prioritized the interests of the students. Her impact on JJC will be everlasting, for sure. Debbie's unmatched knowledge of the college and respect has earned among her colleagues as a testament to dedication. She would undoubtedly be missed. We are truly happy for her as she embarks on this exciting new chapter of her life. Thank you.
Second.
We're going to vote on each individually.
Yes, sir.
We're going to bring them up one at a time. Is Janet here?
Okay, who made the motion in the second?
Second.
Okay, this is for Janet. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries. This is for Myra.
And at this time, we'd like Myra to come up to the podium.
You know, can you? Yeah, because they won't be able to hear you.
What I would like to say is thank you. I've been here all these years, and I'm going to end up crying, so I'm not going to say anymore. Other than thank you, it was a great place to work, and I'm so appreciative.
Thank you.
We need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries.
Lorena Verden? Is she present?
Lorena, are you present?
Okay. So at this time, entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries.
Item 1.4.4, Debbie Albert.
So moved.
Second.
We want Debbie to come up and talk. She's here.
Board of Trustees, Dr. Namuwo, Dr. Farmer, Dr. Gray, I'm not sure if she's online. She is. Okay, Dr. Gray, hello. Dr. Brooks, my friends in finance who I've worked with, Kelly, my friends in HR, Dr. Irwin, Foundation, IT. I look around the room and I have worked with almost everyone here in one capacity or another, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your support all these years that you have given me opportunity to learn. You've really entrusted me with what I believe is the heart of the college. I appreciate what Dr. Santiago said, but I feel that it maybe wasn't so much me as the role. The role is at the heart of the college. I also want to thank our faculty who have consistently been cooperative with all of our changes. We are constantly trying to make things better for the students. And many times, we don't give very much notice, and we ask them to turn on a dime and we let them know right away, oh, there's a new procedure. And they do roll their eyes, but they cooperate. And anytime we've ever needed anything, they've always come through. So I really appreciate that. To our students who are here, I would like to reiterate what Dr. Santiago said, and I want to assure you that every single day, our department, academics, you are the most important thing on our mind. Every day, every day when we're working, we say, is this going to be clear for the students? Can we word this better? Can we make this process go a little smoother? Can we reduce the paperwork? I know that that's a real challenge for you, and we work really hard at trying to improve that. For the board members who I haven't met, in case you were wondering, what is it that she does? I've worked on the catalog, curriculum, degree audit. I've worked very closely with IT. I was on the Workday team. I'm on the SAS team now. And thank you so much for all that you have supported that team. I know everyone is working hard and appreciates it so much. And finally, I want to thank my husband, who has endured years of my discussions about degree audit. I think he can probably, he can probably program it now. He knows what all the problems are or were. So thank you very much. And in conclusion, I'd just like to say, amigos gracias por la oportunidad. Les extrañaré mucho.
Igualmente gracias.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
I'd like to offer a symbolic no. After all what we just heard with about Debbie, why do we let people like that go? But the biggest thing is, is back in 2018 at the Frankfurt Fall Fest Parade, Debbie allowed me to ride on a JJC float and throw out candy. When they still allowed you to throw out candy. I didn't get the best job that day. I thought I did, but I found out the best job did go to Dan because it was almost 100 degrees. It was over 95 degrees, and he got to wear the wolf costume. But the good thing about that, though, it was all prepared and ready to go. The wires to the fan were broken and it wasn't working. And so Dan got to ride in, you know, almost 100-degree weather, wearing a suit that made it 200 degrees. So for the reason I'm sitting here, it goes back to Debbie's initial suggestion to me that this is something she thought I should try or do. So that's my symbolic no to Debbie.
Motion still carries.
We can move on to item 1.5.1, affirming JJC values and commitment to students.
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table?
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borsky?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Motion is tabled.
Item 1.6, public comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
Chairman Bezinski, we do. We have one public comment from Donna Timer, who would like to talk regarding board censures. As a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meetings. Per policy 015501, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board. Keeping in mind that comments should be in good taste and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes and 12 minutes per topic. Thank you for following the procedure.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Donna Timer. I spent 37 years as a resident here in the Joliet Junior College District. I'm a 35-year veteran classroom educator, where I spent part of my time as a high school instructor and part of my time right here at JJC as a collegiate instructor. In fact, I'm coming up on my 10-year retirement on May 1st, which is hard for me to believe, that I've been out of the classroom for 10 full years. And although I left the classroom, I did not leave my commitment to the junior college. I still can serve on this institution on the Foundation Board, where I am the Scholarship Chair, and have read at least 2,000 applications over the course of my 10 years of servitude for students who want to come to this college and make a better life for themselves. I have watched recently many board videos. I have read many board meeting minutes and have seen all of the documentation regarding Maureen Broderick's behavior within this board and outside of our community. I'm not going to focus on that, but I will say, I was bullied by Maureen Broderick when she aggressively confronted me at a foundation event this past year. I am censure number 13 victim, and I am recorded in the meetings minutes of February 14th of 2024, if you want to look it up to see if I'm lying. Maureen, I'd like to address you directly. You have been like a cancer on this institution for the past 12 years. I've seen what you've done as you've spread your disease to other board members, as you've spread your vitriol throughout this institution, as well as out in the community at large. And I am here tonight to beg of you to dig deep, find that last drop of integrity and love that you say you have for this institution, and please step aside and remove yourself from the seat that you're currently serving. I also would implore you to please remove your name from the April 1st ballot. You are not representative of the core values of this institution. You do not deserve to serve in that spot. There are many groups that need to heal, and we have some excellent candidates that are coming up in this April election. Please, I respectfully ask you to do the right thing, the morally right thing, and remove yourself from this board. Please, move on, Maureen Broderick. Thank you.
Item 1.7, a moment of silence. Dr. Namuwo.
Chairman Bezinski and members of the board and members of the JJC community, I'm asking the college community to join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals. Brendan Pierce, a JJC student. Paul Brinkman, retiree and former VP of Business Operations. Scott Olson, a retiree with 50 years of service as a webmaster and adjunct instructor. And Marjorie Bull, a retiree with 12 years of service in our technical department.
Can I add to that list? Gary Marshke, DuPage Township Supervisor, and Mr. Ray Payne, a dedicated employee in our transportation department at Joliet Township Government.
Thank you, Dr. Namuwo. Thank you, Trustee Morales.
Thank you.
Item 1.8, selected reports, Faculty Union Report, Kurt Ward.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And Debbie, I still have curriculum to get through the curriculum, so you can't retire yet. I'm sorry. Thank you for all your help. We would not have half the auto curriculum if I didn't have your help. So thank you. Hey, it's really nice to stand up here and see sunshine coming through the windows when we start our meeting, right? It must be March. We're eight weeks into the semester. And you know what that means? Our students are enjoying a week away from their instructors, and they're probably enjoying every minute of it. But I want to focus on our students this evening. And I want to start by recognizing our student government. If you didn't get a chance to be at the forum last week, you missed something spectacular. These folks run a candidate forum better than the quote-unquote professionals out there around the community and our state. And some of the faces are here tonight, so kudos to you. And guess what? Kudos to your advisors who guide you and make that happen as well. Second group of students, and I want to recognize, are in the theater. I had the opportunity to see the musical nonsense Saturday night. I'm going to tell you what. It was the same quality that you'd see in downtown Chicago for a whole lot more money. So I take my hat off to those performers. And by the way, it was a sold-out performance on Saturday, and I bet you it was on Sunday, too. But I take my hat off to those students, not only on the stage, but all those folks behind the scene that made it happen, and their faculty and the staff that supported them. It was absolutely phenomenal. And if you missed out the opportunity, as I looked at the calendar, there's all kinds of opportunities this spring to support our students in fine arts. The third group I want to mention is in our English and World Languages. Our Word Eater Literary Magazine received recognition, a Realm Award. So I did a little bit of research. Do you realize there were over 420 entries from 47 states and three American international schools that were part of this? This is outstanding. And what, so to our students and the faculty advisors who make that happen, I mean, this is why we're number one and not because we were first, right? And then I also want to recognize the athletic department, right? Our women's bowling, we have a national champion and an overall fifth place. And the thing that I want everybody to remember, these are student athletes. So they're succeeding in our classrooms before they exceed, they demonstrate excellence on the athletic field. So kudos to those students and their coaching staff. And I'll wind up by simply saying this. What's the theme here tonight? Right? Incredible students, supported by outstanding staff and faculty. And oh, by the way, fantastic administrators who find money to make this happen, right? And that's important, right? So what's next? So if you missed the opportunity to see the show or the debate or the sporting event, how can the rest of us participate? Goes back a long time ago when I was a student at North Central College. The president of the time said, our job was to be the student's number-one fan. And that rings true to this day. So while we might not be directly a part of a literary magazine or a coaching, a sporting event, we can still be that number-one fan. So with that, congratulations, students, and have a great rest of the semester. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.8.2, the adjunct faculty report. There will be no report this evening. 1.8.3, JJC Foundation Report, Kristi Mulby.
Good evening. Next week, we kick off our annual Employee Giving Campaign. This year's theme is Thanks for Being a JJC Star Donor. For a minimum of $5 per pay period or $130, each employee will receive a T-shirt that we've designed. So we're excited about that campaign. Years ago, when the campaign started, we raised about $17,000. And right now, we raise over $100,000 just from our employees here to support various scholarships and programs. So we're really proud of that. As you know, we just finished up our Alumni Sock Campaign. This year, we reached an all-time record sales. We sold 442 pairs of socks, and we raised $6,225 for alumni programming. So we're happy about that. Last Friday, we had another alumni podcast. Please listen if you get a chance. It featured Jen Davis and Ken Goldenbacker from the United Way. He's one of our talented alumni, and we're proud to say we currently have over 700 that have subscribed to our JJC Alumni Podcast. I bet you don't know, but we're building a race car here at JJC. The Alumni Race Car Project Appeal. We're actively fundraising to build the JJC Alumni Race Car, a hands-on learning project for automotive students and campus police that will also serve as a tool for student recruitment and community engagement. Three JJC alumni employees will race the car in the 5-0 race for Special Olympics this August. With $100 donation, supporters can have their name displayed on the car, directly contributing to student success and JJC outreach. Our goal is success and JJC outreach. Our goal is to raise $9,000 to fully support this initiative. Right now, we're also working on a veterans' support appeal. We're collaborating with the Veterans Center. The GI Bill now isn't always covering all of our veterans' books, tuition, and fees. So we've reached out to a lot of our legions and places that we feel we need to raise some more money to help our veterans and our Veterans Center. So we're working on that. Our spring appeal this year is going to be our Crawford Honors College. We're set, as you know, to launch that in fall of 2025. And those students, again, will receive full tuition, scholarships, leadership development, advanced academic opportunities. So we're really excited about that. And that appeal will go out to about 3,500 people to help raise funds for that honors college. And then, last but not least, as far as food insecurities, again, this year, we're going to do the Empty Bowls Project. JJC Foundation collaborates with fine arts, student activities, and culinary arts on our empty bowls. And it's really a great event. And it'll be Tuesday, April 15th, at the City Center Campus at the Thrive Restaurant, and then Thursday, April 17th, at Main Campus. Both are from 11:30 to 1:00. It's $15, and you get to pick a really beautiful handmade ceramic bowl and get a bowl of soup and a roll. And all the money goes to our food pantries and food securities. If you have no questions, this is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.8.4, the Building and Grounds Committee Report. We will not have a report this evening. Moving to item 1.8.5, Board Policy Committee Report, Nancy Garcia-Guian.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The Board Policy met last week on Wednesday, 3/5/2025. In front of you, you will find a few different policies that are up for first reading, and some of them that are going to be up for second reading. For first reading, you will see 4.1.1, that is Performance Management, 4.1.2, that is talks about internships, 4.1.3, that is Light Alternative Duty Assignments. And then up for both today will be policies that are up for second reading and approval of board policies. That would be 4.2.1, Public Comments at Board Meetings, 4.2.2, Workplace Stability, 4.2.3, Employment at Will, 4.2.4, Transfer Credits. And then the last one that you will see tonight is 4.2.5, and we'll be able to have a discussion if needed once we get to that component. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.8.6, the Finance Committee Report, Trustee Morales.
Thank you. There was no meeting this month. No report.
Okay, we'll move on to item 1.8.7, Student Trustee Report from Trustee Queenie.
Thank you. Good evening, JJC students, faculty, staff, administration, and Board of Trustees. My name is Ryan Queenie. My pronouns are "they" and "them." And this is my board report for the regular board meeting from the month of March. To start tonight, I'm just going to go over and highlight some recent campus events that have taken place, starting with the Black Student Union and the Masquerade Gala, which was a wonderful event that brought in different student performers and allowed them to share various aspects of their culture with members of the community that attended this event. Then there was the Board of Trustees' Candidate Forum, held on March 4. And this was another excellent event. As we heard from Kurt Ward earlier, it gave, you know, the professionals don't do it as well as the students do. So really, just a big hand to our students who were there last night. Thank you. Then, Spring Fling kicked off on the bridge on Wednesday, March 5. And the theme was safari this year. They brought in lots of different animals on the campus, including a sloth and a, I believe that's a hedgehog we see right there, and then many others. Thank you to the OSA staff who helped put this event together. And then there was also a Student Advisory Committee on last Friday, on March 7, in Peoria, Illinois, at Illinois Central Community College, where the student trustees voted on our legislative priorities for lobby days on April 9, which are the Community College Baccalaureate, then increased funding for wraparound supports for students in mental health on campuses, and then also continued state funding for MAPF grants at community colleges. And I know that the students here at JJC who will be attending, as well as many other students from across the state, are very excited and looking forward to this opportunity to go and speak with legislators in April. So then, now I'd just like to highlight a few upcoming, and actually, I got two slides, so I say a few lightly. There's lots of great events, as Kurt Ward was saying. Go out and see these events. Students put together amazing things on our campus, starting with, and I did highlight Spring Break, because all of the students love Spring Break. It's a nice chance to recharge, relax, and prepare for the end of semester. Then, on March 20, CMAS will be hosting a workshop that will be a student's road rep to immigration support here on the campus. Then, the Culinary Program will be hosting the Wandering Feast on Thursday, March 27, in the Renaissance Center. And this is an excellent event that raises money for student scholarships here on the campus for the culinary program. Then, there will also be the College and Career Fair, the same day, on March 27, in the Event Center. And again, this is an event that allows for community members and community agencies to come in, do open interviews with students, and as well as for college universities to talk about transfer and what those processes will look like. Then Latinos Unidos, and I passed out a flyer to everybody here on the board for their Dream Upon a Star Gala on March 28. And this is another event that will help raise money for scholarships for students. And then, on that with scholarships, CMAS will be hosting a scholarship workshop in their office on April 2. The DEI Program will be hosting their Community Dinner, Building Bridges Through Community Partnerships, on April 3 at the Renaissance Center and City Center Campus. Then, as I was speaking of earlier, Illinois Student Advisory Committee, Student Lobby Days are coming up on April 9 in Springfield, Illinois, where we will be going down to speak with legislators about the priorities that we have voted on, including the Community College Baccalaureate, which I'm and many students here are very excited to see brought forward. Then, Pride Alliance will be hosting their Prom, which they have titled Unity Through Diversity: A Night of Tradition, on April 9, or April 11, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in Lower J Building. And then, the Sustainability Union will be hosting the Rally for Justice, which will be a student protest here on campus to protest different social injustices and issues that students face in their communities. And that will lead me right into the sustainability updates, because, in case you missed it earlier, it's Earth Month. So the Sustainability Union will be celebrating Earth Month with several events, starting with the Cleanup on Hobo Road, which will start at the Greenhouse on Friday, April 7. And then, from, and then the next event, and as you were asking about earlier, Chair Repair Cafe, April 12, Romeo Vale Campus. Then, there will also be a Natural Areas Tour, which is a partnership with the Natural Sciences and Natural Areas Committee to take students through our natural areas to talk about the different biodiversity here on our campus. If you haven't gone on that tour, I recommend it. I went last year with the Student-Employment Max Battles, and it was a great, really just learning experience about all the different things going on in the natural areas and in our land labs here on campus. And then, the Earth Day Extravaganza will be taking place on April 22. And this is a celebration to celebrate the earth. And after that, and then the next event they asked me to highlight was the Lead Building Tours, starting in A Building on Main Campus on April 29. Then, really quickly, Summer Advising Session dates have been set, and the Advising Center asked me to share that with the board and with the students attending tonight, so that if they're looking to go in for advising appointments, they're able to know when the in-person dates are and the virtual date, which they will be having their in-person on April 30, so next month. They will, in the later part of the month, they'll start that. And they will run through the entire summer, May 21, June 11, and June 25, July 9, and July 23, and then August 6. And that will be in the Event Center here on campus. And then, the virtual will be held over Zoom, so it can be accommodating to all students, including those who are still coming to the district and have not gotten in our JJC systems, since I know a lot of our stuff runs on Microsoft. But this is a more equitable and accessible platform for all students transferring. And those dates will be April 22, April 24, May 8, May 29, June 5, and June 18, and July 17, and July 31. And then, Board, I don't take any pleasure in addressing behavior during my student trustee report again, but I feel it's necessary because of the recent events of our, from our recent Board of Trustees meetings. And I just want to highlight some of the essential truths for effective trusteeship. And there were 20 of them from a handout from Pam Fisher, from the ACCT. But I just want to highlight those that focus on ethical behavior, because Board members, we have to operate ethically, or must operate ethically, without conflict of interest, and honor the commitments we make to each other and to our presidents. We also must have mutual respect for one another, and we must always treat each other and staff and community members respectfully, both publicly and in private settings here at the college. And then, as it comes to presidential relations, I just want to share the Board should always support the president and avoid undermining their, his, hers, or their authority during their tenure as president. And Board members should also not direct the president individually. We all know the direction comes from only the full Board, that none of us are in charge individually. So I just urge us all to reflect on these principles to ensure that we uphold integrity and effectiveness as a board. But with that, I'm going to finish my report tonight. Thank you. And yeah.
Item 1.9, at this time, the chair has requested a motion for a closed session under 2C1 and 2C6.
I'll have jokes about that, Chairman. Please proceed.
This is like three mediums in a row. You haven't figured this out?
Thought about just letting you go.
Item 1.8.8, the President's Report.
Chairman, I'll need three hours for this one.
Hence why I skipped you.
I'm kidding. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate it. Ryan, just want to commend you for your leadership. I mean, how active you've been as a student trustee, and how active you are, not only locally, but also statewide as part of the Student Advisory Council. So, you know, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. And thank you to the Board for helping and providing me with all the opportunities to engage in all those settings and be a part of those conversations. So thank you.
Absolutely. Chairman, last Friday, I was on the radio. I was on with Scott Slocum, Scott Slocum in the Morning Show. And I talked about JJC's interest to offer bachelor's degrees. Scott wanted me to talk a little bit about what the governor's announcement meant, and more specifically, the government stated, governor's stated support for offering bachelor's degrees here at JJC. And I was able to not only articulate our position, but really the reasons for allowing community colleges in the state to fill workforce gaps, to lean into the value proposition that is a JJC experience and education, and really to take that next step in the history of JJC, to offer bachelor's degrees here at JJC. So I want the college community to know, Chairman, I want you and the Board to know that we are actively engaged in influencing the legislation. For those following at home, if you're legislative fans or political fans, which I know many of you are, the current piece of legislation is HB 3717, 3717. And I am so very optimistic, Chairman. Governor Pritzker, in fact, just a few days ago, was on Good Morning America, talking about, really bragging about community colleges in the state of Illinois. So thankful for his support. His support is very meaningful. In the state of Arizona, we didn't have the governor's support at the time, but we were able to pass the legislation. Having the governor's support has meant so much to the presidents. Know that we're working in collaboration with the Illinois Community College Board, working in collaboration with ICCTA, the Trustees Association. It's great to be in a state that values not only higher education, but community colleges specifically. And Chairman, before I go on to the next slide, Dan, I apologize that Chairman Budzinski revealed that you were in the Wiley costume. I apologize. That is a secret society. Chairman Budzinski doesn't know. Revealing your identity violated the tenants of who wears the Wiley costume. Nonetheless, your membership in the Lifetime Wiley Club remains in effect. All right. So the numbers here that, you know, Jeff Heap and Karen Kissel care deeply about are the tuition credit. And you can see that we're up 2.58% in tuition credit, which is certainly something to celebrate. Something that the Board is probably not used to seeing are some negative numbers attached. So I just want to spend a little bit of time explaining why those are. And for those of you who recall my report last month, you probably know where I'm headed here. The dual credit numbers are down because we took year-long courses and assigned them to the fall. Standard practice is to assign year-long courses to the spring semester, so we will be continuing that practice next year. And that's the reason for the decline. And you'll notice up top, the negative 3.49% is directly connected to our decline in dual credit. We'll offer one other thing. You'll most likely notice the decline in AB, BACs. That's a decline in our English as a Second Language and Adult Basic Education areas. I suspect that a lot of what's happening at the federal level right now is preventing our students from accessing those very important classes, as populations that typically take those classes perhaps feel threatened right now. So we're doing our absolute best to make our students feel supported and ensure that JJC continues to be a safe place of learning. Chairman, I think that's probably a good transition here. I want to just really send a lot of gratitude to our student government association, our collegiate council, club council, and really, any club that's invited me to be with them. I'm going to try to list them. Pride Alliance has invited me, Latinos Unidos, DALE, and many others have invited me to talk about what the uncertainty, as it relates to the federal government, could mean to not only their club, but their student experience here at JJC. So I'm proud to affirm who JJC is. And we've been creating an identity and supporting our students for 124 years. We will not deviate from that mission, because our vision is, as Kurt Ward said, to not only be the first, because we were the first, but to be the absolute best, and we will continue to do so. So shout out to Latinos Unidos for the invite. I hope I provided some value to their meeting. Kurt referenced bowling. You know, shout out to Matty Laev, who is a two-time individual women's bowling national champion. Matty's not pictured here, but I will tell you a little bit about this. Trustees, you were all, many of you, were part of the decision to expand athletics here at JJC. And one of those sports was, as you'll recall, women's wrestling. We had heard that it had been growing in the communities in and around JJC. Well, I'm happy to report and thankful to Marketing Communications for amplifying this message and sending it out over social media. And if you haven't watched Katie actually win the national championship, you should. It's very entertaining. So I just want to send a shout out to our Wolves head coach, Gary Woods, assistant coach, Connor Merchant, and the national champion in the 131-pound division, Katie Ramirez Quintero. How about a hand for Katie? Chairman, just the second year of women's wrestling, and we already have a national champion. So I think the future is very bright. Shout out to the great Ayesha Ellis, who's here today. She's going to hate that I recognized her, but you'll recall, probably not, when she first read a proclamation, I joked that she was going to the University of Hawaii. She didn't appreciate that very much. However, however, we did get our star soccer player signed. Adrian Martin Gonzalez is graduating. He's an international student. He got a full ride to the University of Hawaii to play soccer. How about a hand for Adrian? Pictured here are Gisella, his mom, Michelle Valle, and Tahani, of course, is everywhere supporting our international students. So I thought that was something worthy of sharing. Another celebration of success, Chairman. So pictured, you'll see Tiana over there on the right-hand side. We escaped Boys and Girls Club Annual Gala at the Harrah's Casino, made our way to greet the women's basketball team. At 10:30 at night, they had just qualified for the national tournament. Tiana was a willing participant here. We were able to, okay, I don't know, maybe not, but we were able to celebrate the women's basketball team, Chairman, and, you know, just shout out to Coach Sanderson and all the, and... the, and they won their first game today at noon. How about a hand? They're the ninth seed. They beat the eighth seed. They're a really fun team to watch and really, really make us proud. Chairman and trustees, thank you for, you know, joining me and the cabinet and members of the JJC leadership team, really to develop, establish, maintain goodwill throughout the district. Pictured here, we've got trustees at, and members of the cabinet, at the annual YMCA Gala at the Bowling Brook Golf Club. And on and on and on we go, the annual Joliet Chamber Annual Awards Celebration. And still, United Cerebral Palsy event up at Bowling Brook, the Great Chefs Tasting was a fantastic event. And pictured in the upper right-hand corner, Chairman Buzinski's there over my forehead. The JJC Culinary Competitive Competition Team was there, participating at the Great Chefs Tasting. And of course, trustees joined, Tiana and I, at Boys and Girls Club Annual Gala. Thank you so much for being engaged and involved. Chairman, in this role, I've been very fortunate, you know, serving as the president of the very first community college. And of course, as Kurt states, it's the best community college. I'm invited to be in different spaces nationally. I've embraced that role and was happy to present on a panel as an invited guest of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to talk about some of the things we're doing in AI to increase and maintain the equitable outcomes of our students. So trustees, thank you for allowing me to enter those spaces, embrace those spaces, and hopefully make us proud. Speaking of making us proud, Chairman, I don't know where these transitions are coming from, but the problem with President's Open Gym is I get one year older, and there's just a steady stream of young volleyball players and basketball players. But I can still hold my own, Chairman. But I'm happy to report that basketball was full. And then over on the right-hand side, I believe we had either a five-on-five game or a six-on-six game, another way, you know, inviting, that we invite the college community onto campus to be part of what we do. Chrissy referenced the incredible success of our SOC campaign. Here, we have pictured our employee spotlight. This group is referred to as our SOC models, Chairman. And you'll see many familiar faces you referenced there. I'm not sure what the pose is that Dr. Farmer is striking there, but someone in the audience at some point has got to come up with a name for that. Chairman, thank you, trustees, for all of your support. And with that, I'll yield back.
I'd like to congratulate you on that 2.58% increase. Thank you for that. That's, it's very impressive considering, you know, sometimes the climate of the board, but we, I thank you for, you know, sticking through thick and thin with us and being here and all the things that you've accomplished, considering. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to wait, make one special note of the chefs competition. The best dessert of the whole evening throughout the building was the one being offered by the JJC students, and they didn't enter it in the competition. But, I mean, it was a melt-in-your-mouth dessert that was just incredible, and everyone was going back for that, so.
They know how to do desserts.
Yeah. It was really good. So now, we get to go to item 1.9, closed session. The chair has requested a motion to enter into closed session under 2C1 and 2C6.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10, a motion to return to public session?
Second.
Aaron, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.11.1, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on February 19, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.12, the approval of agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries.
Item 1.13, approval of consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
I have some items that I'd like to pull.
Items are?
3.1, 3.5, 4.2.1.
I also have some items I'd like to pull.
Okay.
4.2.2, 4.2.3, 4.2.4, and 4.2.4.
Ready to vote on the non-pulled items?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.1, approval to pay the listing of bills for the period ending February 28, 2025 as presented.
So moved. Second.
Question? Question I have is, I've always been pulling out the bills for KGG, and I'm at a little bit of a loss. I went through the KGG report, and are we doing full retainer option, hybrid 1, or hybrid 2? Because I'm looking at three different options that we've had, and I don't know which we are being paid. So I'm questioning that, the bills.
Is there a difference in billing?
Yeah. One is 8,500 a month, one is 5,000 a month, or one is billed hourly, which it looks like we're getting billed hourly. So I'm questioning which one are we doing? Because now we're in 9-1 through 830, 2025, and then a new one comes up, 9-1 of 2025 through 830 of 2026. I'm wondering which one we're on, because it seems like these retainers for general work are there. Are we doing any of these? Or are we doing directly pure hourly rate?
I can answer, yeah, it's purely hourly.
Pure hourly rate?
Mm-hmm.
Why do we not go with a hybrid of either the full retainer or the hybrid retainer with an hourly rate option?
We'd have to go back to the discussions when we took that vote, so I do not know.
All we did was vote for them to come in. We didn't, there's three of the, three that were presented in the, in the package. That's why I'm asking. So if you guys would like to see, I have a copy for each one of you. And then, I am going to still question the bills, and this was under the less than 5,000. My concern still falls in the Hawaiian GLI issue of going. Not that I want to go, I'm just asking, because I'm seeing the bills that are coming through for all air travel and that. I'm still trying to figure out why, and I'll say this, Trustee Harris is going because she went to the Seattle, and we have that in the budget to do that, Seattle or Hawaii. And the Hawaii one has nothing to do with committees, and I have confirmation back from the ACCT that it's strictly nothing with committees at all, for all general, all general trustees to go.
Your question is related to the expense item. What is your question on the expense item?
The Southwest, Southwest Air.
And what's the question on it?
Well, my question is, if we're paying this and she's going, where is the funds coming from? If it was either Seattle or Hawaii?
Maureen, we've gone over this now three months in a row. You've heard my response. You've emailed me. I've responded via email. She is going as our ACCT rep, just as you went to everything as our ACCT/ICCT rep. Yes, you can shake your head all you want, but it's, I've been on this board for four years. You have gone to everything.
I didn't go to the GLI at all, as an ACCT/ICCT rep.
So going back to this, is the decision was made that she's going as the ACCT rep.
For what reason, though?
The same reason you went to everything in, I don't, you know what? We never questioned all of the things you did. You just said, because I'm the ICCT rep, I get to go. And you went. She is now our ACCT/ICCTA rep. That is why she was elected to go. She will report back on the overall conference, as you did when you were the rep.
I went as a trustee, just so you know, not as an ACCT or ICCT person. I'm clearing the air on that. I did not go as any rep. I went as a trustee, and this is for only trustees, no designation at all. Being that I've been involved with it for 10 years, I'm just sharing so that you understand where it's at. It's nothing related to any committees. There's no committees coming.
So then, your item, the discussion that you have right now is over a dollar amount on the bill?
Right.
Okay. So again, what's your question on the dollar amount in the process we use to approve bills? We've asked Karen Kissel multiple times to come up and describe how we approve finances, how a bill gets paid, how many steps it takes. There is a level of authorization that's repeated until it finally gets paid. So our question is, why are you questioning the bill that has been authorized by multiple people to appear on this? If your question is then instead not about the bill, and it's about why she's going to the ACCT event, that's a different thing, and it's not related to the payment of bills.
Okay, then I'm questioning the budget, violation of the budget, then. That's it. I'm done.
Okay.
I don't see a violation of a budget, and I do support Trustee Harris attending this conference as our, one of our newest trustees. As you, as Trustee Broderick has always mentioned, you are the longest-standing, most experienced trustee. So I think it, it, it's beneficial for Trustee Harris to attend. And just for the budget sake, overall, throughout the years, I have a listing of all of the monies that have been spent on your bills. And we have $18,835.41. Only in 2022 to 2023, the college spent $10,927.38 funding all of the events that you attended. So don't point fingers at other people, Maureen, okay? Trustee Harris should be attending this, this conference.
I'm not pointing fingers. She went in November and December of 2023.
And you've gone to plenty of them.
I've gone to one GLI, and that's what you normally do in your term. Her first term, she went in Bloomington to the GLI. It's the same information that she got in Bloomington. Thank you.
I support Trustee Harris attending this conference. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
It's not even a debate.
No, I, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay. I am honored to have the opportunity to go, and I will continue to go, because I know that it will help me be a better trustee for the people or the constituents who has elected me. And this is part of all board procedure or processes, that they make sure their trustees are, or trustees or councilmen or whatever elected to any board, so that they are there and know how to represent them in a way that they're proud to send the individuals. And I am proud to go. I even bought a new pair of purple shoes, so I plan to be there. I yield back my tie.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Ready for a vote.
We're ready to vote.
Ready for a vote.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.5, board of trustees, approval of the sale of college personal property.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do, let me go back to it. So hold on a minute. Public comment at board meetings, correct?
Um, you said 3.5, correct?
Board of trustees, approval of sale of college personal property.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we're looking at 3.5 right now.
Yeah, sorry, wrong one.
Any discussion?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay.
Too much in the book.
Would you like to see mine?
I'm just going to question that we are keeping an inventory, that it's a specific inventory that we know that these things have been removed for keeping the inventory correct. So just specifying that, that was my concern, because I don't want to have to go into another type of final audit on it, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions related 3.5?
At this time, ready for a vote.
Ready for a vote.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Buzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.2.1, the second reading of policy 015501, public comment at board meetings.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I am concerned about when we are berated up there, last was tonight. It's hard when you look at somebody that is coming up to berate a person with not all full facts. And the sad thing was, the whole thing with, that the foundation members talking about, started when she initiated comments on Facebook that went against me personally. This is not about this policy. We're talking about this policy. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's about people coming up to speak, and I'm concerned. It's their freedom of speech. Well, let's remember that word, freedom of speech. Let's remember freedom of speech. As long as it's courteous and respectful.
Point of order, Chair Decorme.
Well, I think we should have something that does not, that shows total respect. There's no pinpointing someone without full facts on there, and I don't think she had full facts.
Did you have an actual question you?
That's my concern. I think we should add more in there for more respect, because I don't see that, you're not allowing us as board members to be, say anything. We can't say anything. We're elected officials. We have to continue. But can we come off, can we come off, can we come down as a citizen? Can we remove ourselves from the board and come down? No, we've gone through this before. We have already addressed. We don't have the right to do that.
You don't have the right to speak as a public comment if you're a trustee, no.
Okay.
We also, it sounds like what you're asking is to write into the policy, something about mandated respect from people when they make a public comment. We can't mandate respect when people come to that podium to speak to us. We have to be ready to be prepared to hear whatever they're going to come and say to us, whether that be a respectful comment or something that would be embarrassing or disrespectful for this board. So there, we can't mandate that within policy respect. That's, again, that falls into freedom of speech. People have that right to come up here and say whatever they would like about our board and how we've acted based on our agendas and based on how our meetings have been conducted. And we also can't fact-check either. We're not the arbiters of truth up here. That's kind of why we're public officials. So if we were to try and go and fact-check everything and try to vet everything those people are going to say, we remove the whole point of a public comment.
Exactly.
So that policy has to stay by virtue of the fact that we're public officials at a public institution.
We're not recognition? This has already been stated, but this policy already includes some language about some conducts that are not going to be acceptable. Everything else, people are able to hold us accountable. They're able to call us out as trustees if we're doing something that we're not representing the student, the student body, or the administration or students. They have that right to call us out. And as elected officials, we should already know that and therefore behave like people that are, well, let me try again. If we're demanding respect, that's okay, but we need to be able to behave in a way that displays that we actually are able to respect others even before we demand respect. Thank you. So this policy, I don't see any issues. Thank you for your recommendation. Any additional questions or comments on this particular policy before we move on?
We're ready to vote on 4.2.1.
Yep.
All right.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borsky.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
No.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.2.2, which is a second reading of Policy 02.01.18, Workplace Civility.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did she hear you?
Is there any discussion?
Oh, yes, I have some. Sorry, I didn't realize that was needed still. So this policy adds trustees to a Division Two policy, which is for college employees. I think we need to relook at that and find a Division One policy to add this to, although I think we already covered it in our, um, what's at the beginning of our, our book, our, our board ethics.
Code of Conduct.
So I would, that, that's my one thing is that I don't know that adding trustees to a Division Two policy for college employees under that section, I think that's a contradiction. My other concern with this policy is the fact that you are adding, there's not very many changes. There, there is, the only changes are the fact that you're adding the, uh, the word trustees and bargaining to agreement. So there's very appropriate sanctions. So I'm not really sure, you know, I'm sure those appropriate sanctions are probably spelled out in this workplace stability procedure that you didn't attach to the policy. So I cannot in good conscience approve any policy where there are basically no changes besides a procedure added. And also to this one, because that's most of the policies that I pulled, basically you are adding procedures only that we haven't seen. You're asking me to approve a policy based on a procedure that's added that I'm not able to see. So I don't, I can't do that. But specifically with this one, I think that you need to, you know, reconsider adding trustees to an employee division.
Trustees? You comment?
Can I go ahead and pass it over to Kissel? Would you be able to provide some detail?
I can try. I think the reason why we added trustees to this, number one, because it was workplace ability. And oftentimes we are working with the board, they're acting on our behalf, and we're working together as a, as a collective body. So that's why we added that.
And I believe it's.
Well, I completely understand your thought process, but I think that as trustees are specifically covered under Division One policy.
Michelle, one moment.
I believe it's also best practice that once we do implement a policy, we can vote on it, and then the procedure is to follow. So we don't necessarily need to have a procedure at the same time, correct?
We normally don't bring procedures. We never bring procedures to the board. That's something internally we follow.
Right, thank you.
You, no, you, it's not that we don't bring procedures to the board. I'd asked when I was a part of the policy committee because this was a conversation on multiple board meetings, and Maureen had asked for the procedures.
Michelle, Michelle, you're out of order. Michelle, wait, all trustees have had a moment to speak.
I haven't finished my first three minutes, and I'm the one who asked for this discussion. And that thought process is, okay, go ahead.
Any other one trustees want to speak on this?
I just will say, I mean, it's in the work, it, it may not be that we are hired officials, so that may be where the, we don't fall into the Division Two, but we do work with everybody who is a hired official here at the college. So we do need to have some sort of consistency with, that's written in policy that provides employees those protections as well as us, those same equal protections. And I think, I know that's something that I've had conversations with the board chair on this side previously about the, how the trustees are not employees in the college, but we do, we are subject to some of the same rules by laws and, you know, different areas that, that employees are subject to.
Correct. So on work, workplace civility, the reason trustees are added to this, and I'm not part of the, part of the policy committee, I can't be sure, but what I read into this is there are going to be times where a trustee is in the president's office. There are three or four additional people in that office besides the president. It already has been determined that we, as a board, have not always been civil with the people that work in that office who are campus employees. What this policy is basically, is holding us accountable for being civil with them. At the same time, we're asking them to be civil with us. And that's why I read trustee belonging in this policy. If we are in their workplace, they should have the same right to civil behavior from us as we do from them.
I understand the, the thought process. I am just stating that trustees are specific to Division One policies.
Okay, one moment, Michelle, Michelle.
And therefore, if you would like a workplace ability.
Michelle, hold on one moment.
Policy, it should be a part of the Division One.
Allow trustee Broderick to speak. Her turn, please.
Okay, so it says students, and I'm looking at the word, the violence, discrimination, harassment, including sexual harassment. So if that be the case, I'm concerned about this policy then that there's not anything of a student code of conduct or any conducts put into here, because I don't know what your procedure is going to be, and I would like to see that. Because after seeing things that are on the D A R T website, I'm very concerned about student behavior on this one and violence and discrimination harassment.
We have asked, back to the procedures, we had asked multiple times that they be provided in the board book. We mitigated that by having a policy committee, which, you know, you have kicked me off of, and I cannot approve any, all of these policies that you are putting through have very minimal changes other than you're putting through a policy, I mean, a procedure that we are not able to read that you can change at any time without us knowing. But yet you can't put the procedure into play until you put that little line there. So I'm sorry, but no, you're not going to sneak something past me because if it's, why can't you put the procedure in the board book? Why are we able to read it? And I have multiple, I will.
Thank you, trustee Lee.
I will show you board meeting minutes from policy meetings where I asked for procedures that were never brought into meetings on the policies that I was asking, which is why we kept opening them back.
Time has expired.
Thank you. I think this policy basically just asks us to give all staff members the same respect when we're on campus, and I'm supportive of this policy.
I do want to provide some quick information. The policies that we present in front of you, they have a particular process that they come back for revisions and any modifications every four years. Or if there's a new potential policy that is being introduced, that might not fall within the, every four years since it's a new policy. But this is something that we're taking a look, is on a, is an ongoing cycle. So every four years, their policies are going to be up. We'll make modifications to make sure that they comply with everything that we're doing here at JJC. And that would mean cleaning up the language a little bit, modifying some things, making it more simple or, and more clear. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we vote?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I, I support this, and the reason is it's clearly stating how everyone is supposed to behave when they're working together. I think if we need to separate trustees and staff or whatever, we can outline that those specific responsibilities in a different policy. But this, this, in my opinion, clearly states that working together, how we're supposed to perform in the workplace. And whether we're elected, a contractor, volunteer, staff, whatever, if we're working together on a team on the premise of JJC, I think this clearly indicates what we need to, to be doing. So I support it.
To echo trustee Harris and trustee Morales, I don't think it's that deep. We need to treat everyone with respect, and this policy just simply outlines that. It simplifies it.
Should we not be adding the student code of conduct since you're identifying students in here too as well as trustees? Because there is a student code of conduct that they all have to agree to when they come onto the campus.
And they do. And if they don't, then they will see Cindy Barrios if that's the situation, the dean of students. So yes, there is a student code of, and they do follow it.
Ready for the vote?
Are we ready to vote?
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
No.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borsky.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.2.3, which is a second reading of Policy 02.03.01, Employment at Will.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion on that. One second, I'm getting to my notes.
No, the timer continues.
That employment at will adds the statement likewise, college policies and employees' handbooks do not create an employee contract of any type. What was the thought behind this sentence and why did it need to be added?
Hi, thanks for the question, trustee Lee. It's duty. So we've been adding this, it's a best, standard best practice to clarify that anything in writing, such as a handbook or otherwise, does not create an employment agreement. We have a separate policy under Section Two that does handle the president's contract. He's the only one on, under a contract right now that explicitly says that nobody else is. But as a matter of best, best practice, when we're making salary offers, writing handbooks, we always have this language that just says nothing is implied here to create an employment contract. So we are employees at will. Those that are members of the collective bargaining units are governed under their agreements. So again. Matt, is there anything you'd want to add?
No, that's, that's exactly right. It is best practice. I mean, you want to make, you, you want to make sure it's clear that there is no contract implied. It's, it's, it's an employee at will situation. And that just clarifies that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I provide some clarity just to make it extra simple and to the point. Any additional discussion for this particular policy before we vote? Nope, just go ahead and vote.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borsky.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.2.4, which is a second reading of Policy 03.01.02, Transfer Credit.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Some more discussion question. There's seemingly small word changes in the transfer credit. It states, um, the registrar's office evaluates all credits from the institution. The changes read, the registrar's evaluate, office evaluates all requests for transfer and strikes out the institution. So can you please explain the thought process behind these changes?
I will go ahead and provide some information on this. So the changes that you see is to make it more clear, we're taking away the word institution because it has already been stated that we're talking about specifically the Julia Junior College policies. So it's again cleaning some of that language. It's information that is not needed because it has been mentioned above. The other information is just adding the link to the actual registrar's office to make it more accessible and make sure that we have all the information in one place for this particular policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Just completely changes, the wording completely changes the entire policy. I'd just like to make note of that. The registrar's office evaluating all requests for transfer is now the new wording. When before, the registrar's office only evaluated credits for our institution. So now we're enlarging, it, it completely changes the, the wording. It doesn't clarify anything actually, but in my opinion, but thank you for your opinion.
Having worked here and working with students and transfer credits, I do understand that this is actually a lot cleaner because it's already implied. It was too redundant in the past, and I think looking at it like this, it's a clearer, just simpler process because again, it's implied and they're going to transfer, what are they going to transfer? Credits, obviously, right? And where are they going to transfer here to JJC?
We do know Julia Junior College, but in that particular paragraph, we are saying transfer credits earned from regionally credited colleges or universities, military coursework and international coursework. So we mentioned a lot of colleges in this.
Michelle, point of order. Michelle, you have to allow all the trustees.
See, this is the problem with discussion. I'm trying to.
No, no, the discussion.
The question. I'm simply reading the policy that is written in.
Point of order. You have to allow the other trustees to participate in the discussion.
Trustee Morales was still not done.
You have to allow other people to speak. You just can't keep interrupting everybody. Right now, trustee Morales has the floor.
Thank you for that. Yeah, so it, it's very clear in that the registrar's office evaluates all requests for transfer, and it's transfer of credits, and they would be transferred here to this institution. So I am very comfortable with the way that this policy is written, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Trustee Harris, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Trustee Broderick, do you have anything to add?
No.
Trustee Stan Borsky, do you have anything to add?
I'll add something real quick. I think the link is really good. I like that it's very accessible for students or staff or anybody else that like quick access to the policy in question. And as to the policies and changing the language, what I see sometimes in these policies is that, at least during the time that I've here, it's pretty normal and standard practice to sometimes go through and change little bits of the verbiage. And that's sometimes down to personal style of the person that's editing it. Sometimes it's down to making tiny little distinctions. But from what I can tell, most of that is kind of, to a certain extent, semantics. And I would argue that there is no real legal distinction between those two things that would be surmountable or important in a legal context. So I would say that it's kind of, not that the relevant is, the discussion is completely irrelevant, but it just doesn't really make all that much of a difference in the end. Maybe it's a little easier to read, maybe it's a little harder to read. When it comes down to it, it doesn't really change the underlying policy, at least in that specific instance. And I would appeal to the attorney to, if you have an opinion on that.
No, I don't see any change, I don't see the, how the suggested changes makes any difference in the application of the policy.
I, I would just reflect the comments of trustee Stan Borsky and agree. This is semantics, and we need to get through this. Transfer versus transfer credits, they're the same, or credits, transfer credits, it's the same thing. We're making it more accessible for students to come to community college. I'm going to yield back my time.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask Dr. Farmer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, chairman. I just want to clarify with the board, whenever we make policy changes, we always bring in the experts, those individuals who are providing insight for those changes. So the registration area, the registrar, were the individuals that made the recommendation to this change. So I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And trustee Lee, we're back to you if you have further discussion.
She's in yellow. Why is she in yellow?
Because her time's almost out.
Her time's below two minutes.
Is that what it means?
Yes.
Because I've never seen us go to yellow.
Oh, we have gone to red.
Ever?
Several times, negatives.
Trustee Lee, do you have further comments?
She says she's cut out. Somebody cut her out? How does she get back on?
Is she still there? Mario, is she on? She disconnected?
She disconnected?
Is she there? It's at request to join.
Do I have to request you join?
Yeah. Now she should be back on. Thank you.
I don't know if she can move on.
She would need to lock.
She's back. I think she's back.
Should we make sure that Trustee Lee heard Dr. Farmer's last statement? I think that's when she cut out.
Trustee Lee, did you hear Dr. Farmer's input to this discussion?
No, I did not.
Dr. Farmer just left the room, so we'll have to wait a minute.
Do you want me just to repeat what Dr. Farmer said?
Yes.
What Dr. Farmer said is the experts are the ones who write each one of the policies. So when a policy comes up for review, it goes to the division and the department, who are the experts in that area. They're the ones who propose the changes. It was then sent to legal, it was sent through the president's leadership council, and was returned to policy committee for a first read and then a second read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very familiar with how it works. I was on the policy committee, but thank you for reminding me.
Any additional discussions? If not, we're ready for a vote.
I would just like to state one more time that again, I will also not be voting for this policy. Not only do I feel the word changes completely kind of changed the policy, but I also feel as though, again, we have a related institutional procedure that the trustees are not allowed to see, and upon request, they'll never receive. And in the future, if you could please put the procedures in the book, in the board book, if that is the, pretty much one of the only reasons for changing the policy, is to add a procedure. Thank you.
Question? Do we, Karen, do we normally see the procedures when you're in policy to see what they're related to?
I've requested them, and if you look at board meeting minutes or request board meeting minutes, I did not receive anything. And month after month, I would request the same thing in policy committee meeting, which is one of the problems that I was having, which is why I had asked Dr. Namuwa to have Dr. Farmer sit in on the meeting, which I have in email and text messages. Thank you. The problems I was having on the policy committee.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 4.2.5, which is a second reading of Policy 04.16.00, Grades. I need a motion?
Second.
And discussion.
Grades is very similar. My discussion that I pulled this for, and the reason I wanted to pull this, it's very similar as small word changes. Under repeating courses is literally the only change to the, to the policy, and it states, the original stated, both grades, I'll read the whole paragraph, "When a course is repeated, the better of two grades give, the better of two grades given at the end of the repeated course becomes the official grade. Both grades will remain on the permanent record, but the most recent grade is used to compute the GPA. When transferring, a student should consult the four-year institution, as some colleges and universities average all of the grades upon transfer." Some universities. So we're basically changing it to include all of the grades, and my concern is just would this be in the best interest of the student? Under the original policy, it seems the best two grades would be used. So for instance, let's say a student is really bad at math or English, and they receive an A, but they really want an A. So they repeat it five times. They get a D, they get a C, they get a B, they finally get that A. The last two courses would originally be the only two that JJC sends on those transcripts. The way that this is reading is that we are now going to send all regardless if the university requests or uses all of them. And I just think that that may not be in the best interest of the student, and I was just wondering the thoughts behind sending all of the grades versus the best two grades that the student received in that class.
Can I go ahead and provide some clarification?
Sure.
Okay. This is specifically for one specific course, whenever they have to retake it. Okay? So we're just looking.
Right, like math or English, maybe somebody's bad.
So my turn. Thank you. So my turn. Thank you. Again, we're looking at the average of those two grades. So we're not adding all the other grades to that particular average. We're taking the average of those two classes, the same course that might have been repeated twice in order to make it, make sure that we are, again, we're just cleaning the language. The actual content of the language, of the particular policy has not been changed drastically, and is clearly outlined here for your reference. Now I'm done. Go ahead.
Any other comments, input?
My other comment is just the same. I just, before my time.
Michelle, point of order.
Has my five minutes been up yet?
No, but once.
Because my five or my three minutes is not even up yet. I would like the time to rebuttal.
Michelle, Trustee Stamboreski has the floor. You have remaining time when we come back to you.
I was also just going to echo what Trustee said. It seems like a difference without a distinction. When I read through it, I basically looked at it, and I'm like, oh yeah, that's essentially the same. I would also appeal again to the board attorney, does the semantics on this, but does that pose any legal distinction here?
It does not.
All right. To me, that's the only relevant detail.
No comment. For me, I agree with the comments from Trustee Stamboreski, that we don't need to be arguing over semantics.
Do you have any comments, Maureen?
I have a question. Now, when my son did his course, he had to retake a course at ISU. But they didn't show the course that he took, that he got a D in, and then he took the same course and he got a B. The report card never showed that at all. So why do we, I'm trying to understand why we show two grades or all grades or whatever. Help me understand that, because when I saw his report card, that one wasn't on there. It was on the first time, but when it got to the, him doing the new class, to repeat it, it didn't show anything on his transcripts.
You'd have to ask that question to ISU.
No, I'm asking this question to them, why it's showing. So please allow my question.
It's showing now because we're moving into a more best practice with our ERP. So what we've done in the past, we're trying to somewhat enhance it, and so now you will see the two grades moving forward, which is a best practice at this point.
So that's why you're doing it?
Yeah. That's correct.
So just to clarify, Dr. Farmer, that would be just the top two grades. So if they took the class.
No, it's the top.
More than two times, it would only be the top two?
The highest grade would be the one that would be highlighted.
Well, all of the grades would be sent regardless of how many times they took the class?
If the university requests that information, yes. It is a registration function.
The way that the policy is now written, and it crossed out the two grades, and it says all, which makes...
I think, are you finished? Can I speak?
Yes.
Okay. I think this policy was, in the first place, it only, it implied students only repeated it once, so having taken it twice. But we all know, sometimes you got to take it two or three times, right? The point here is that the highest, now it is highlighting that the highest grade, it will be used to compute the GPA, which is in the favor of the students. So seeing that, I feel comfortable with this policy. Working with computing students' GPAs, I understand the process, so I feel very comfortable with approving this policy. Thank you.
Michelle, you have some time remaining?
I will also be voting no on this policy, because it adds three procedures, which we have not been able to see.
Let's see, Harris, were you able to share?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to provide any comment before we close it up?
No, but, well, it sounds like Trustee Lee is asking for procedures. I don't, I don't know. I know that's the administrative side, but if a trustee wants to see a procedure, are we able to come in and see a procedure?
Yes.
Okay, well.
I would like it in the board book, so that when we're reading through the board book, so we wouldn't have to.
I'm still speaking. I'm still speaking. I'm still speaking.
If I can't see it.
Point of order.
And read it.
Point of order, Trustee Lee.
If that's the only change to the policy, essentially.
Okay. Trustee Harris, go ahead and continue.
My point was, there, the professionals that are dealing with the procedures, that is not a board process.
Correct.
And I think that's where we're getting confused.
My worry is when they were trying to.
I'm speaking.
Point of order, Michelle.
Point of order.
They were specifically saying this in the procedure, so Maureen can't look at it, and then they wouldn't give it in the board book.
Michelle, you have to allow other trustees their opportunity to speak.
You allow people to interrupt my five minutes, so that they can rebuttal me, so I am going to do the same to them. If you continue to allow people to do things to me, I am not going to accept you for this board. I'm sorry.
Time has expired.
And allowing students, allowing other trustees to rebuttal me then, yeah? In my time.
Go ahead. Trustee Harris.
Trustee Harris, please.
We are able to see the procedure.
Yes, we are.
So, once it comes to policy, I would, I would be, I guess, I would be glad, or I would be satisfied, or I can't think of the word I'm looking for, with, with the information that has been researched. That is not what the board is to do. And I said that once, and I'll say it again. And we can, we can change, we can send it back, we can discuss it, but if they're, they have made the professional.
Recommendation.
Recommendation, thank you. And from, from a board view, we, they're being paid to do their job. And when we try to deter or divert their responsibilities, it's not, it's not helpful. There, I would say that they're not going to send us anything that's not going to be in the best interest of the student, and that's, that's what we're here for. Now, if we have to make some changes or just some language, we can do that. But as far as the professional research from the specific departments, we should let them do that. We should let them do that. I take, you'll back my time.
That's operationally right. We are governing, so we're a policy board. So you're right.
But let it be known, though, that you can always have those policies emailed to us, because that's what was done. If we asked if we had any concerns, we could see them emailed to us, because that was happened in the past, if we ever had any concerns about, for the procedural part, because if we didn't understand it, and we wanted to see it, we could see it.
Okay. We're ready to vote?
Yep.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee. Did she say no?
She said no.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.3, Board Policy 05.02.00, Prohibition of Sexual Discrimination and Sexual Harassment, Title IX Allegations.
I'm looking at 4.3.1, correct?
And you're going to explain this, right, Anne, all the stuff that's going on with this thing?
I can if you need me to.
So 4.3.1, Taking From the Table From the February 19, 2025 Board Meeting, Agenda Item 4.3.1, Approval of Board Policy 05.02.00, Prohibition of Sexual Discrimination and Sexual Harassment Under Title IX Allegations. It's a motion to pull from the table.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion.
We just vote at this point?
No, it's just been off the table, so now it's off the table, so now we have to make a motion to approve it.
So we have to vote to take.
We've got to vote first, right.
Right, to take, vote to take out the duty. So go ahead and take the vote.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee. Did she say no?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Abstain.
Trustee Pazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.3.2, The Approval of Board Policy 05.02.00, Prohibition of Sexual Discrimination and Sexual Harassment.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so are we, I'm looking at, we're following Title IX 2024. Help me understand why we, off incidents, we've crossed it out, but still it's on there that says Policy 2024.
So for this one, we had to revoke the 2024 Title IX in order to comply with the court ruling that was released back in January 9, 2025, and go back to the policy that we had for 2020.
So we're back to the policy of 2020?
Correct.
So this is what this was all about, to take us back to 2020 since there was a change in the 2024 one, correct?
Correct. Two steps, revoking the 2024.
Okay.
And then implementing the 2020 version.
Okay, and we're not, we're staying in accordance with what 2020 was. We're not getting ourselves in any trouble with federal funding or anything, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We are ready to vote?
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Abstain.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Abstain.
Trustee Pazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Trustees at your station or at your desk, you have a copy of redacted emails that were sent to the board chair regarding the next two votes. If you need a moment to read them, you can.
We can take a, do you want to email it now?
Yes, if it's possible.
We can take a picture and email, and text it.
Michelle, we're trying to get you a copy of the document we're all looking at. Give us a moment.
Peanut butter. Do you eat some peanut butter? Nope. This is a factual matter.
We need
Kristy, aren't you glad we moved you up to the beginning of the meeting instead of waiting to the end? And I don't remember whose idea that was, so I, you know. We got some excellent report writers down on this side of the, you know, dais if you need to, you know, contract them out, so.
She almost looks asleep.
How did they sense it?
What's that? I can't read them.
If they play seven, that's usually like a play-in game, so. That's, yeah, fortunately, that's how tournaments normally work. But, but think of it, though. It's still something to be extremely proud of. If you, if you look at the year, if you were beat out by the national champions in the tournament, you know, you can argue with everyone that you might as well have been tied for second place, the game just didn't take place, but, you know.
Wow, awesome. Yep, yes.
It's a nightmare.
Again, you know what? The opportunity in the postseason play against a number one team is still
You're trying on that, where they're building, you know, building, you know, in the square area where the pump used to be. Right, right. Which I didn't, I don't remember seeing that on the drawings. I mean, I assume it's just like an area for events and things like that. Yeah.
Trustee Lee, the document has been sent to you by Dr. Farmer. Do you want to take a couple of minutes to read it, please?
Yeah. Well, that was the tray, too. That was the Christmas tree, was it, too? I like that.
The time worked a little bit better for me, the one that you have, please go. Yeah, it's got a book on one side and there's some brush on the other side.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
I have not yet received the document.
So, Michelle says she still has not received the document.
Okay, is she able to refresh, send and receive? Because
Yeah.
I did hit the little refresh button.
Yeah.
What'd she say?
She hit the refresh button.
I hit the refresh button.
Okay, did it pop up?
No. I can wait a few more minutes.
You better keep making your rounds.
There we go, I just got it.
Let us know when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you send it through this, did you send it in an email or through this chat? Because the little
It should be attached. It should be an attachment.
It's an email.
Should be an email attachment from Dr. Farmer.
What, you only make the one round?
Trustee Garcia, I get there, it looks like I get there earlier than you do. My plan is, I think I get there around the same time as trustee Morales.
Five minutes before.
Five minutes before. So I'll take you to the hotel with my colleague, then I'll come back and pick up trustee Harris, trustee Garcia.
I can
Provide you both, no, 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 you'll get a, you'll get a historic tour from a native Hawaiian. How many times can you say? I'll pick you up and I'll show you my home.
But they do bring in, like, they'll be different islanders that are actually from the people that go to the college.
Considering daylight savings, because Hawaii does not
I'm done reading.
She said she's done reading.
She's done.
Chairman, she's done reading.
We're ready? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So continue with Board Item 4.4, 4.41, Sent to trustee Maureen Broderick for comments to college employees at a recent public event stating that she did not support the raise given to the president of the college with his recent contract extension. Said comments violating Board Policy 01.01.00, Board Policy 01.03 and .00, and the model standards of good practice for trustee boards number three and 10.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Freedom of speech is there, facts are there. I'm sorry that she felt that I said things that I shouldn't have, but it's facts. But I'm going to read this. "When the lawsuit pending in court is resolved, all of you will recognize the error of your ways. It is obvious to all who can see that your tactics of impeding justice will not succeed with the electorate. The idea that the college is a free speech zone is superfluous. All of the United States of America is a free speech zone. The president may not appreciate it, but he is the employee of our board. None of us get paid. He and his administrative staff are very well paid with defined benefit pensions that are very well, that very few citizens of us have." I, the question of community college board must ask, is their employee worth a, a contract that big, of the 14% that brings them up to $325,000? Those are facts. I am not saying anything disparaging. Those are facts. In the case within the burgled attempt at the election, of election interference, the answer is no. Emphatically, no way do you, other board members, exceptions, Michelle, think the president is campaigning against me. Why? Because I have experience and I know what's going on. We need a breath of fresh air on this board to protect the rich heritage of our beloved Joliet Junior College I have served for 10 years, and to protect our students from this board's reckless spending and ignorance of the community college law. Currently, it is an embarrassment to all."
Comment, reckless spending is spending over $18,000 to send the most experienced trustee and still to show the behavior that you show. Freedom of speech, everybody has freedom of speech, but we have to exert some stability when speaking to other people. And that is something that, that two particular board members here are very deficient in. So we can speak, but we should speak professionally with diplomacy and talk to each other.
I'd just like to add that I would say yes. Dr. Nemo and all of the administrators here at this college are worth every penny, if not more, that we are paying them for the work they do to support our students on a day-to-day basis. It is not easy work. It's often work without thanks. And it's something that, you know, by providing the salaries that help provide for this, our employees' cost of living, we're ensuring people come back to work each day. So I would say yes, that the salaries we pay our employees is, are worth it, yes.
One more thing I'd like to say, nobody is, the president is not campaigning against anybody. That is not his job to do. His job is to do what he's been doing to grow this college, which he's been doing an excellent job considering the hostility and the harassment that he's endured from you and other board members. Another board member, period.
Karen, we're ready to vote?
No, I have one more comment. Sorry, didn't imagine me. The 18,000 that you're talking about over 10 years is 1,800 per year. If I look at your expenses this year, you're about $7,000. So you've been on the board 10 years. If I went back and looked at yours, you would definitely exceed the 18,000.
Not at all, I have not gone
Yes, it would.
We're ready for a vote.
We're ready to vote, Karen.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
I'd like to make a statement before I vote. Can I do that or no?
Discussion's closed.
Yeah, discussion.
Discussion's closed, yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.4.2, Sent to trustee Maureen Broderick for comments to college employees at a recent public event stating that she monitors department budgets, intimidating those employees. Said comments violating Board Policy 01.01.00, Board Policy 01.03.00, and the model standards of good practice for trustee boards number eight.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, we're talking about our duties now. As a community college trustee in Illinois, we are responsible for setting policies, overseeing budgets, ensuring the college educational mission is fulfilled, and act as an advocate of the institution, all while we are representing the community. Budgeting finance, we approve and oversee the annual budget, contracts, and expenditures, ensuring sound financial management. So you're basically telling me I can't be a trustee because I say I watch the budget? That's part of my job.
The key word in this sentence is the employee felt intimidated.
The all the employees should realize that the trustees are up here, and that's our job to do.
No, our
If she felt, no, I'm still talking. If she felt intimidated, I'm sorry, that was wrong. She should know that we always watch the budgets. And I said it to one person, yes, she heard it, and I said that I was watching it to make sure that they had adequate funds for them and their, their things that they were doing. So no, this is all mistaken. All, I'm, I'm just furious about it. And you know,
You can be furious, but as a trustee, we never go to a department and tell them, intimidate them, or to explain to them that we're monitoring their budget. If you want to act as overseeing the budget, your first and only path is through Dr. Nemo, not directly to a department head, ever. Nowhere in our duties is it say, monitor this department, and if you feel something's wrong, go say something. Never. That's intimidation.
It's not intimidation.
It is intimidation.
No, it's our duties, our duty
It is not your duty to confront
They should know that we are watching it.
One at a time.
It's not your duty to confront an employee over their budget. They do not report to you.
I made a statement to the
It doesn't matter, it was taken as intimidation. We know how you talk to people. We know how you talk to people.
Well, he said he appreciated. She took it a different way.
Discussion. Although the employees had appreciated, employees are always, they're going to be very polite and respectful to board members because this, you have, we all have positions of power, okay? And that, i-if we behave in a very unprofessional way, it could be intimidating to staff. And all of our comments have to be directed to the president, not to the staff. As far as overseeing the budget, we make votes on the budget, but we do have a finance committee, which is a member of the board that oversees the finances along with the finance department and people in that, in that area. So yes, the committee oversees to a granular level those finances with the vice president of finance. So we are doing our due diligence, okay? Just because you're not on that finance committee doesn't mean that, you know, it's not happening. I'm on that finance committee along with another trustee, and that is taking place, and we do not micromanage the college. So you are, again, overreaching your power and your authority, and you're bullying people. That needs to stop.
I'm not bullying. There were 23 questions that I had, that I asked for the budget, that was approved, that all of you approved when I still had 23 questions as a trustee, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, that didn't get answered. And I had asked that, you said to go to the president. I got no response back from the president. I had to wait till after to go back to Dr. Farmer, and then she got the information that I needed. I would have thought that we would have all seen that information prior to. If somebody had questions, we're entitled to see it. So I did start the finance committee, and I'm very well of the finance committee, and I did have certain questions that I thought should have been answered before it was approved. I'm surprised that you all voted for it, even though you knew a trustee had 23 unanswered questions on the budget.
We trust the staff that they know what they're doing.
Yeah. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I didn't say anything the last time, but I want to make sure I get this in. In regards to a, one voice, when we vote as a board, we make a decision, whether you agree or you don't agree, the majority takes precedence. And that's what we should display when we're out, that we're, we're a cohesive board, we have made a decision, this is what we stand on. When you have the side conversations and conversations that, that are demeaning to the board, even though we made a decision as one, it's not, it's dysfunctional. And, and, and I And, and I, I'm just sick of that. Just sick of it. So I support the censure because we've talked about this before. And it's like our children. How, how many times do we have to keep saying the same thing over and over and over? It's time that we stop and take notice of what's going on. Because the, the sidebar conversation and the negative delivery to others, it just doesn't look good here. And everybody feels that the Joliet Junior College is serving a purpose. And if they're not watching the YouTube, then they don't know. They, they go by our reputation. But when you take it outside of this boardroom and start talking negative about yourself, because if you say something about any other trustee, you're talking about me too, because we are one voice. So I just want to say, we are one voice, and when we make a decision, we, that's what we should stand on. And when we don't do that, it shows a dysfunction. So I yield back my time.
And I'll come back on that one in regards to.
Was I sharing?
I'm sorry?
Is everyone done sharing?
Nope. We're still looking at this side.
I'd only say that at a public event, never should we be ever talking to a college employee about budget. We are in public, we are, especially at an event, we are representing what the college is doing at their best interest. That is the wrong place, wrong time to have that discussion about budget. And then also, to Diane's point, no individual trustee has that authority to go out and be making directions or directive. The only time that we can have a directive is when we are all in this room together meeting as a board. That is when we can give direction to the college about where there's, but we want to see them go with certain things. So with budgets, that's not going to come from an individual, and then departmental budgets, that's so outside of the scope of gov, policy governance, that we should not be worried. We look at the annual budget for the college, one budget. We don't look at each individual departmental budget, and we all know that as trustees. I'm going to yield back my time now.
I asked somewhat rhetorically, why are we bringing up an issue we voted on months ago? We made a decision. That's kind of it. We shouldn't be going to college employees, we shouldn't be going to members of the public, we shouldn't be going to staff or faculty, and we shouldn't be going to students and disagreeing verbally and rhetorically violently against something that we all voted on as a team, as a group, as a board. It's absolutely abhorrent behavior, and I'm shocked that it continues, because this is just obscene. A, a point that I've heard a couple of times is, in defense of this, is something along the lines of a freedom of speech. Freedom of speech has complete limits. When you go on a board like this, we're supposed to act as a team. We're asked, hey, we, you need to act as a team. We're not being prosecuted criminally or civilly for anything that we say when we're being censored. A censor is, for all intents and purposes, and it sounds bad, a slap on the wrist. We're just asking you, and we're saying as a board, we're not okay with this. This isn't all right. We don't agree to this. What a trustee said, we completely disagree, and we don't think this represents the board. That's what a censor really is. There's no freedom of speech impairment there, and that's been held up many, many times. I, I would reference our attorney. Our censor is a violation of freedom of speech in the general case.
No, you're not. You're not prohibiting speech. You're saying that the speech that was made is inappropriate and against board policy.
Yeah. That's perfectly fine, and that's what we ought to do as a board, to held, hold our members to account. If we're not doing this, we're, we're not doing our job. So I completely support this, and I, I echo what trustee Harrison, trustee Queenie said about this is, doing this is just completely out of the scope of what we're supposed to be doing as trustees, and the values we hold as trustees to this institution. So I absolutely favor the censor.
Trustee, trustee again?
Yes, thank you. In our board packet, board book, we have the model standards for good practice, practice for trustee boards that includes 17 different items. And we have it every single month, at every single, every time that we get a book, so that we hopefully, we do remember that information. But clearly, based on the information that we received and the previous censure that we approved, our board members, specifically trustee Maureen Broderick, is not complying with just being able to be professional, be able to represent college in any public function, and is clear violations of our policy, and also the standard of good practice for trustee boards. I will be voting yes to this particular censure.
Trustee Lee?
She on?
No comment.
No comment. Trustee Broderick, you said you had some follow-up?
Yes. You guys are all making this sound negative. When I talk to the employee, I wanted to make sure, because I have always watched that area to make sure that they had adequate funds for it. So it wasn't anything negative. It was being a positive position of saying, I'm glad you're happy with what we're doing. So it was not anything negative. And apparently, she got the wrong impression, because he was very ecstatic, that I said, he says, I'm glad you are. I'm glad you are. So that bothers me that we have my position and her position, and not the gentleman who I talked to. So I think this is just, it's, it was not negative. It was all positive, because I have always watched to make sure that area has sufficient funds for them to do what they need to do. That was it.
Can I comment? May I make a comment? Well, if we're watching, and we're making sure, and if you see some deficiency, then you should go to the department that it, that it happened. Not, not at a public setting. Not at a public setting.
Well, and also.
I yield back.
We don't go to the department where the, we see the discrepancy. We go to the president or the board chair, and realistically to the board chair, and he goes to the president to then get those questions answered. It's, we don't go to a individual department. And then, positive or negative, not our job. Policy op, policy governance, day-to-day operations. There's a clear difference. Not our job.
Totally agree with trustee Queenie. This shouldn't have happened at all. It doesn't matter if the conversation was positive or negative. That was, that was an encroachment of our role. We're not supposed to do that, period. We go through the chair. Chair goes through the president, and then you get that sorted out that way. We don't go directly to people. It's, it's pretty clear in our strategic view as trustees, we don't hold any power outside of this seat, outside of this board when it's in session. We shouldn't use that power to talk to employees about what may or may not be going on in departments.
And I, I stand corrected, and that is what I meant. We go through our procedure, we go through our process, so that we can deal with the department. But thank you for that.
Trustee Morales, you had some final thoughts?
Just real quick. I understand trustee Broderick says she has, like, almost 30 questions that allegedly were unanswered. This department is overseen by Karen Kissel, correct? Yes? Karen, I think you have a master's degree, right? In finance, or what is it in?
I have an MBA.
You have an MBA? Okay. So I trust that you have the education and the background, and so does your team, people that you have interviewed and hired, to competently and effectively do your job. So you will not get 27 questions from me. I have an MBA too, okay? So I have a very clear understanding of, you know, how this works. So I don't ask you 27 questions, because I know better. Your time is valuable, you have a job to do. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to be subordinate and do that to you, okay? Or insult your intelligence at that, just because I have this powerful seat up here, and I'm a trustee. I would never do that. I, we have to trust, as trustees, we have to trust our staff and their knowledge and their training, that they were hired because they know how to do their job. So thank you. And we, we've passed audits every single year, which shows that we are in compliance with every financial regulation that we need to be in. Thank you.
And my area of concern was expenses increasing. That was it. Nothing with you, Karen.
We're ready to vote, Karen?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Section 5 reports, 5.1, the representative to the ICCTA, ACCT, trustee Diane Harris.
Okay, let's see. Where did I write it? I got it written down here. Okay. Okay. The ICCTA will be meeting this weekend, Friday and Saturday, at the, in Schaumburg.
Lyle.
Lyle, in Lyle. Sorry. I don't have it written down in front of me. But we will be meeting there. Also, there is a national survey that we'd like all of the trustees to respond to. The goal is 2 point, 2,000 responses, and we still need 300. So if you've not completed that, please do so. The link should be in your email. Yeah, so the ICCT usually meets, we have our roundtable, and on Saturday, I believe, chairman Bazinski will be filling in for that, for that day. That's, that's all I have. That, that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, aren't you going to be at our meeting?
So there's a change in plans for that. I'll tell you about it after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item 5.2, trustee updates. Since Diane went, I'll start on this side. Trustee Queenie?
So I've given my student trustee report. I don't really have any other updates beyond that tonight, other than, yeah, no, that's all. I'm excited for lobby days in April with the other student trustees, and now that we have our legislative priorities set, I know I'll be talking with Kelly Burchnelly in the next week to get information about how to get those meetings scheduled, so that when we're down there, we're going to be able to have those conversations that will help move the needle forward on the community college baccalaureate degree issue. And then I just am gonna, as I do most nights during my trustee update, thank all of the students who I see out in the audience still for being here tonight and attending the meeting. So I know that we definitely take some time out of your week, and especially this week during spring break, it's very appreciated that you are here. Thank you.
Trustee Stan Borsky?
I, if I may, I, if I may ask trustee Queenie, is this your last trustee report?
Next month.
Next month? Okay. I'm excited. I just wanted to point out that to everybody, Happy Easter, Happy Ramadan, for those of you fasting. This, it has been absolutely a very long board meeting, and I'm super glad that all the students have come to reflect the words of trustee Queenie, and I'd like to thank the staff and faculty for being here super long as well. I'm looking very much forward to the financial plan that's coming up here in a little bit that's currently being worked on, and I'm very excited to see where the institution goes. So thank you very much. I didn't really have a whole lot to say, so I'll pass it off to trustee Garcia again.
Thank you all for being here during your spring break. We really appreciate it, and just have a wonderful semester for the rest of the weeks that you do have class. Thank you.
Trustee Morales?
I'd just like to echo the sentiment of my team here. I want to just also remind everybody, I want to thank you, first of all, for staying this long and having to deal with all of the dysfunction, unfortunately, on this board. Again, I've said before, we are volunteers, we're not getting paid, but I think the majority of us have a very good vested interest in seeing that the, that the students are receiving a quality education and having a wonderful experience here, and the staff as well, as you're engaging with our students. Like Mr. Kurt Ward mentioned earlier today, he, you know, echoed the sentiment of having a very, very well-organized forum, candidate forum. And remember, we get, it's a privilege, we get to choose our governance. So your vote and your voice matters. Please make sure you get out and inform people, you know, that we do have an election upcoming this April 1st, and to get out and vote. So that's, thank you so much.
Trustee Broderick?
I'll pass the till, I'll be, I'll be the last one.
Trustee Harris?
Okay. I, I found my notes. Sorry about that. Thought I left them at home. But anyway, in regards to trustee update, I'd like to say congratulations to every single one of you in this room for community college, was it day? Community college day, for being a part of the magnificent JJC, for being the first, and for educating the students in our 525 district. So congratulations to everyone on today. And, and then I just want to back up a little bit. Our Friday afternoon seminar will have, for ICCT, we'll have a discussion titled, "The State of DEI in Higher Education." We'll have a panelist, Dr. Michael Gavin from Delta College, he's the president, and Dr. Kenneth Barnes from Rock Valley College, president. He's the vice president of Equity and Inclusion, and Mr. Matthew Swift from Robin Swartz and Associates. So the day will be packed with exciting sessions throughout, and these two speakers will highlight our lunchtime and evening event. So we'll have, I'll have more information for you. And also, I attended a candidates forum over, over the weekend, and one of the questions that some of the, the audience had for the JJC trustee, they were asking, do you support, they called it the 121212. Not the 12 by 12. I just wanted to correct them so bad, but I wouldn't. But they actually asked each candidate, and surprisingly, each candidate said yes, and some expounded on it, and they did. So just thought you'd like to know that, that the community is aware that it is in existence, and the ones that did not were really asking questions afterwards, because they knew that I was representing the Joliet Junior College. So they did ask a few questions, and we're just glad to continue to get the word out there. So that, this time, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Lee?
She on?
I'll go after Maureen.
Trustee Broderick?
Okay. Please allow me a couple of minutes to address my concerns to the JJC community, students, and foundation. First, I'd like to say that I acknowledge, as senior member of this board, for all of you to know, not, to note, that to see this governing board not function at the highest and best level that it should be governing. I'd like to present some facts. I met with the chair and the board council on Monday, February 10th, 2024, to discuss and resolve any issues that we've encountered as trustees, and for us to move in a better direction and work together for the betterment of JJC and the students. The chair, the board council, and the president, working together and writing up 13 censures on me, and convincing trustee Lee to read them at the February 14th board meeting, negated our meeting on February 10th, February 12th, pardon me. The board didn't have policy for any legal pro, due process that should have occurred to remedy any of these censures. The 13 censures violated the Open Meetings Act, and I was forced to direct the violation to the attorney general, and they directed me to file the circuits, to the circuit court. And that's what the lawsuit is solely about, the corrections of the violations. The lawsuit is only to have those OMA violation censures, along with the resolution, removed, and nothing more, nothing more to gain. Almost realized that this lawsuit never would have existed or occurred if the board didn't break board policy and violate the Open Meeting Act, which governs all boards. I met with council, the chair, and the president on May 3rd, 2024, to work still on mediating all matters, and to move forward with good board governance. Sadly, the legal bills showed more teeming up against me. I felt as though I was being set up more now. All board travel as the president of the ICCT and JJC trustee was removed from me, from being reimbursed, as it should, it should be according to the Illinois Community College Act, for trustees to be reimbursed for those expenses, and to further their education both state and nationally. The chair and the executive board changed policies and added verbiage on trustee good standing, of which no other community college has in their policies. This verbiage restricted trustees from being able to attend educational conferences, both statewide and nationally. The chair didn't keep me as the ICCT representative, as I have been that for the past eight years, and for him never to assign me to a committee in both of his two years as term as chair. The duties of me as your elected trustee was just to show up at board meetings and be allowed only three minutes to talk. No agenda items that I requested ever were allowed. Emails sent to the chair were sometimes answered or expressed with a negative attitude. These past two years have been very trying and, and, and missing a lot of respect to me as the senior board member. I voted no on items that I felt were inappropriate for the board to approve. There has been retaliation shown by my fellow board members for not rubber stamping and being a taxpayer advocate on this board and voting no. I'm not afraid or scared for standing up for the, for the JJC voting community. My first eight years here were great, with true good board leadership that we are missing now. My concentration would be for the board to have goals, and also the president to be given goals, that we have not given to him, that's been missing, it's not in his contract. JJC has always been my focus, with no other agenda, only to support the entire JJC community. I regret the comments made by the foundation member Donna timer.
Time is expired. Time is expired. Trustee Lee?
I would just like to say regarding voting, if you, that this election is coming up, it is very important. Maureen is a senior member on this board, and she knows the questions to ask. She is being targeted for asking questions, regardless if the rest of the board wants to agree with that or not. I am now being targeted for supporting her, because I changed my mind, realizing that, finally realizing, as a new trustee, as someone who's only been on this board for four years, please elect constituents, Maureen Broderick and Bob Wonderlick, who was on this board for 40 years and chair for 20 years. There is a reason that they want new elected trustees, inexperienced trustees, who do not know how to ask the questions that Maureen is asking, and she is being bullied heavily by this board for asking the right questions. Please, this is the most important election, and do not let this board sway you against Maureen, because I would not have put myself in this position to be slandered by this board for no reason. I believe in Maureen. She is good for this college. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time to Maureen to finish reading her statement.
I'm done. Thank you.
Item 5.3, the chair report. So, at the beginning of tonight's meeting and the communications, I outlined some things that were recommended for us to do by the Lannard-Mutian report. They gave us recommendations to move forward and how to deal with some of the behavior that was found to be valid in the report. So, at the same time, I have a trustee saying that we censured her all these times, and we had no facts. That report produced the facts. It was done by an outside legal firm with no influence by us. It was done through conversations with 20 or more employees. The facts are what the report says they are, not what you believe they are. As far as the recommendations go on holding this board accountable, I can tell you right now, it is not going to happen. We are not going to be able to hold this board accountable, because we have a member who's been censured now for the third time, and her supposedly highlighted on the senior member of the board, then why do you keep getting censured? But until you can sit back and acknowledge that some of what's in these censures actually did happen, and you were at fault, you will never approve or improve as a board member. You can tell me all about the awards you won for student of the year at the ICCT, it means absolutely not, because of demonstrated behavior in these board meetings with this board to the president, and everyone in this room who you approach is wrong. You will, you have never once ever said yes. Your answers are, well, they took it wrong, or that's not what happened, or did you see what she wrote about me? Who cares? Your behavior is out of line with 90% of what's in this book. You sit here and tell us you're the senior, senior member, and we should bow to you, that everyone on this campus should respond to you. As a senior member, it means absolutely not. It's proving nothing. You embarrass us every time you go out in the community. You ask, why aren't you invited to any of these events? Look at those censures. Look at how many of them happened at an outside event. That's what happens when we send you to outside events. We get feedback from the community about your behavior. I've walked into multiple events where somebody on the staff has come up to my wife, and I ride away, so, oh, you're not going to believe what Maureen's already done. She's only been here 10 minutes. Well, that ruins my evening, because now I'm obsessed with, what did Maureen do? Who do I need to go apologize for, for her behavior? So, as far as the Lannard-Mutian report and what it recommends for us to do, as much as this college has spent on that report to verify that your behavior was in violation of all these board policies that you refuse to admit and can lay blame on other people in this room, not only did we waste money on that report, we wasted our heart on thinking we could make you better or make this board better. It's not going to happen with you on the board. It's not going to happen, because you won't acknowledge any of the behaviors, you blame it on everybody else. Now, you're telling me it's board leadership. Let's go back to previous school boards you were on, and all the lawsuits involved with that. How did I figure into that? Was I on that board that caused all that problems?
We're not talking about the panel.
I'm talking about what's happening in this boardroom. You tell us you have 20 years' experience. I'm looking at that 20 years of experience. 22. Thank you for correcting me. That's 22 more extra years that you should know better. We are dealing with behaviors that just are so unacceptable. We have students coming to the board meetings to talk about it. We have outside guests come to talk about it. We see reports from employees that report that Dr. Namuwo, not us, come to talk to us, send me emails. Until you can acknowledge that any of this actually took place, this board will not improve, and it will not improve with you on it, period. And at that, I will conclude my report, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.